I'd like to call this regular meeting in the Rattone City Commission to order. Do we have a roll call, please, my plan?
Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavis.
Present.
Commissioner Jockamo.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I thank everyone for coming out tonight and joining in online. Couple of announcements. All city offices will be closed on Monday, January 18th, 2021, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, January 26th, 6:00 p.m. here in Chambers. And Commissioner Chatterley, I believe we have a recognition for Leighton Moon for the City of Rattone Design Award.
Yes, so I'm just going to read a little bit of this letter. I won't read the whole thing. This is from the 2020 American Graphic Design Awards. They sent a letter saying, "I want to call attention to Leighton Moon and the award-winning performance on your behalf in our 57th anniversary American Graphic Design Awards." From more than 10,000 entries, only a small handful of creative projects, including your lively and striking City of Rattone branding, were selected as winners. Their performance is, in a nutshell, exceptional, but not surprising, given Leighton Moon's consistent record of design excellence. Moreover, the City of Rattone is in great company in this uniquely challenging year. Organizations and brands whose design agencies and departments are recognized in this year's record-breaking competition include, and then they go on to list several companies such as AARP, Amazon, Coca-Cola, Foot Locker, NBC Sports, Black &amp; Decker, T-Mobile, and many others that we probably recognize were among the other winners. By way of background, Graphic Design USA has been the news and ideas magazine for creative professionals since 1963. Our flagship awards program is nearly six decades old and honors the power of design to shape commerce, culture, and causes across all media. So I thought that was pretty awesome that they received that award specifically for our branding and wanted to make sure that that was recognized.
Absolutely, very good. Great, great job. Great job. One other thing I'd like to bring a little recognition to. You know, this past holiday season, we had an influx of snowmen in town. And I would like to thank Devon Barden and his group and Rattone Main Street and the Rattone Beautiful Project for providing the community with those snowmen. It sure made the holiday season a little more festive and I look forward to them doing that next year and maybe, who knows, more snowmen, baby snowmen, who knows? But I want to thank Devon and his group and Rattone Main Street. So thank you. Good show. It was very good. All right, item five, items from citizens present. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Are we going to do that now or?
Uh, Mayor, I would say.
When we get to that.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Sounds like a plan. All right, let's move into the business items then. Item 6A, approval of December 8th, 2020, regular commission meeting minutes and December 21st, 2020, special meeting minutes. Mayor, I found nothing to change on the minutes or the special meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the December 8th regular meeting and the December 21st special meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, deliberate enact on resolution 2021-01, public meeting policy. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is typically our first resolution of brought forward, commissioned every year. And basically, we adopt the policies that are provided to us from the state of New Mexico, from the Attorney General's office in regard to conducting our meetings. And typically in there, you know, we want to hold meetings at a predictable, normal time. We do have some special meetings through the year, but we would like the public to know that we meet every second and fourth Tuesday of the month at 6:00 o'clock. It's at a time that people can generally participate and provide their input to the commission and they can track the actions of the commission or the proposed actions and it's a transparency issue. So this is in line with the state requirements and something that we've done every year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barry. Yeah, it's something that I've been a part of now for quite a while. And that's the first resolution, as he says, every year. I thought there was discussion and maybe they didn't do anything about it, where it says participate in meeting of commission by means of conference telephone or similar communications equipment. And I thought they were going to address something about like Zoom meetings and stuff like that. This day being the state, apparently I haven't heard anything they did.
Now, Mayor, you're asking tough questions. So that's when I turn over to the city clerk and look at her.
All righty.
Which section are you referring to?
That would have been section nine. If nothing though has officially come out, I would assume we're all right here.
I mean, I think the language there is broad enough. They did make some changes earlier in the year because of the pandemic.
Yeah.
Especially that we had to comply with early on that were in the actual open meetings that.
Okay.
And I think we complied with that. I mean, you could certainly amend the language, but I haven't seen anything like a new template for a resolution.
Sounds good.
But I think it's broad enough that it kind of encompasses telephone or the similar communications.
All righty, no comment, I die out.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2021-01, public meeting policy.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021-1, public meeting policy. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, public hearing and introduction of ordinance changes to chapter 90, animals. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commissioner, some months ago, we had talked about potentially an amendment to the animal ordinance. The animal ordinance is currently chapter 90 in our city code of ordinances. And the reason for the revision at that time was, well, simply to bring some responsibility to the owners of dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs and try to strengthen up that provision that would make dog owners responsible for those animals. We have had a couple of dangerous animal incidents in Rattone during the past year and which some injuries were occurred by several people. And so we did take a look at this. You'll recall that you did get some input from citizens asking the city to take some actions to protect the public from dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs. And this would be one of the actions that we're looking at. So generally, Mayor, the actions that I would propose to the commission after our last discussion would be requiring the owner of a potentially dangerous dog or a dangerous dog to obtain a liability insurance coverage. And that could be in the form of a surety bond, as we have written here, in the amount of $100,000. So it would also require the owners to register that dog. Now, that currently is a requirement. However, typically, we have not really seen the owners of the dangerous dog or potentially dangerous dog come to the city and meet that requirement and register that animal. So that really is not a change from what we have in the current ordinance. However, currently, the ordinance says that the owner would pay to the city a fee of $150 to register a potentially dangerous dog or a dangerous dog. I'm really recommending to the commission that we strike that requirement. That really doesn't seem to meet this goal of protection of the public. But we would require the owner to obtain that $100,000 surety in the form of insurance or a bond. And I'm putting language in here that that would exclude a routine homeowner's policy or a renter's policy. That would be specific to the dangerous dog. Now, we did get some input that you may not be able to obtain that insurance policy. So we have added the language that that could be in the form of a surety bond. And so I think that is typically what I've seen requirements with other cities. This is not unusual language. Now, I have one potential correction that came up in conversation today. What we anticipate here is that we would identify a dog as potentially dangerous dog, require the insurance coverage or the bond be in place. But that's under a potentially dangerous dog. It's possible, and as we've seen, we did not really have the dog identified as potentially dangerous and an attack happened. So I would copy that same insurance language into the section for a dangerous dog. Right now, I've left the wording that we would have the $150 fee. But I would recommend before we talk about introduction that the red language, as you see, requiring liability insurance coverage would be listed under potentially dangerous dog section or dangerous dog section. So I would ask the commission to consider that change to what I've given you. Now, I'm going to back up a little bit and go to the beginning of the redlined copy that I've given you. And I've given you two things. One is the existing 90.025 section, and all of our changes are taking place in that section. And then I've also given you animals ordinance amendment, which I'm recommending that we amend at this time prior to your consideration of the amendment. Now, at the beginning of 90.025, you see definitions for dangerous dog and you see the definition for potentially dangerous dog. Now, just a characteristic of this ordinance, chapter 90, there's a separate definition in the introduction in the general section of this at the beginning of the ordinance for both a dangerous dog and a potentially dangerous dog. And that definition is different than the one that is in 90.025, which I would suggest that could be a problem. So what I've done here is I've crossed out the 90.025 definition and I've inserted the identical definition that we see at the beginning of the chapter. So you see that for dangerous dog and potentially dangerous dog. They would be identical. Now, we can handle this one of three ways. We can remove these entirely or we can remove them from the general section and leave them in this section. We could just mirror those, and that's what I've done here. Or we could replace those in the introductory section with what's in 90.025. So I'll let you discuss that a little bit. I'll go on to section D, and that's where I've replaced the $150 fee with a requirement to carry $100,000 in liability insurance or a bond. I would suggest that we add that then to the section for the dangerous dog. And also, as the city clerk had pointed out to me, when we take action on things or we write this up, there can be a difference in what's published by AM Legal through the codification process. And so under section three of this section, I've changed division A to division D. And that is the extent of the changes, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barry? Comments from the commission?
I think it's important to tighten the language up to make sure that both sections have similar language. And I definitely support adding the insurance surety bond section to the dangerous dog section in addition to the potentially dangerous dog. And if possible, I think it's also important to have the same language, the corrected language also, as long as that mirrors what's in the other section, so that it's all on the same page.
Thank you, Barry.
So where you see A lined out and D is red, right below that, 3A currently reads, "The owner has paid an annual fee of $150 to register a dangerous dog." We would replace that with the insurance provision on the previous page. Thank you, Barry.
Yep.
Are we able to introduce that tonight with those changes?
I believe we can as amended.
As amended, okay. I'll make that motion to introduce the ordinance changes to chapter 90 as amended and discussed on animals.
We have a motion and a second to approve the introduction of the animal ordinance with the amended discussion we've had this evening. Is there any other comments or questions? Michael, why don't you do a roll call of votes, please?
Sure. Mr. Chatterley?
Yes.
Mr. Jockamo?
Yes.
Mr. Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Just one question now on the, the, motion carries, by the way. How often do we get a report of a dangerous dog, out of curiosity?
I wonder if I can call in Chief Garcia. Chief, I don't know if you can help me with this?
I'm sorry, I need to hear that question.
Yeah, so we're talking about divisions to the animal ordinance concerning a dangerous dog or a potentially dangerous dog.
Yes.
And the question is, how often do we get a complaint of a dangerous dog or a potentially dangerous dog?
It's not terribly often, maybe once or twice a month. Now, once that dispatch call comes out, animal control will respond to the scene, attempt to make contact with the dog, but if the dog's spirited off by the time she gets there, she doesn't identify the dog, doesn't identify the owner, so it could potentially be in an area or neighborhood for a while before she accidentally catches up with it.
Sure.
Okay. Now, I'm just curious.
Sure.
How often do we get those? All right, any other comments, questions? All righty, thank you. Item D, deliberate enact on appointments to the Labor Management Relations Board. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commissioner, you recall at the December meeting, we did talk about the Labor Management Relations Board. We said at that time that we have had a board here in Rattone that generally talks about certifications, decertifications, things like that relating to labor organizations since 2017. And in order to, there was change of statute, and in order to continue that, we would have to repeal that section of our ordinance and implement a new section that was drafted, provided by the State Personnel Board, and that was completed. So under this action, I would ask the commission to consider a reappointment of two of our board members. Now, what the, how the ordinance reads is that one member of the board would be appointed by management, by the commission. And since 2017, the commission representative or the manager representative has been William H. Daley. And I am recommending to the commission that we reappoint William H. Daley to that seat. You do see an application in your packet regarding that. The ordinance also has a provision that the labor organization will appoint a representative of labor organization, and that will be confirmed by the commission. Now, we have four labor organizations at the City of Rattone. In your packet, you see a letter from three of those labor organizations that have asked you to appoint Sarah Kowalski to the board on behalf of the labor organizations. We do not have the request or any input from the fourth organization, but three of those did submit their request in writing. Mrs. Kowalski has been representative of the labor organization since 2017. So that would be a continuation of what we have had to date. Lastly, the ordinance provides that those two will meet and they will pick a third member of the board. And so they would, we would call for a meeting based on your action here. We would schedule a meeting and that action would be on the agenda, that they would select that third member of the board. Since 2017, that's been Eric Honeyfield. And so they can take that action again. They can reappoint him. They can reappoint someone else. There are really only qualifications that that person can't really be associated with either the labor organization or the management of the city. That's basically the requirement. So with that, Mayor, I would also recommend the reappointment of Sarah Kowalski to the board.
All right, thank you. Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Daley and Ms. Kowalski as members of our board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, deliberate enact on purchase of police vehicles and equipment utilizing state price agreements with Philon Ford of Rattone, Colesy Service, OLC, and WatchGuard. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commissioner, you will recall that the City of Rattone did request capital outlay from the 2020 legislature. That was almost a year ago. We requested $300,000 and we were awarded $226,525. Now, typically, the legislature will point out that once an appropriation is made, local agencies don't move on it very quickly. However, I would point out that the, we were not authorized to move on this before. Now, we were given a grant agreement, I believe in October, and we brought that to the commission at that point for approval of the grant agreement. Maybe that's in December, actually. I think we scheduled a special to approve that. So we moved on that as soon as we got the grant agreement. The severance tax bonds were sold in October. That's where October comes from. And since that time, and we, this is a real team effort here. Jason Phillips has worked with the Department of Finance Administration. What would be required to go forward with the procurement is number one, your consideration here, and then approval of the procurement method, which we're going to talk about. And then the local government division, Department of Finance, would issue us a notice of obligation. But we did receive that NOO today, and so that's pretty rapid. And I think it's to the credit of Jason that he has got such a good relationship with the Department of Finance in that regard. And we're pretty, we can move pretty quickly on these grant funds, and so that's pretty rapid. Now, also, I have asked Chief Garcia here to answer any of your questions or address questions that you have in regard to the proposed procurement. But basically, what we have proposed to the commission is that we would buy six new police vehicles. And I'm happy about a couple of things there. Number one, in the words of Chief Garcia, "We cannot get these vehicles in fast enough." We are really holding the existing vehicles together with a lot of hope, but they are pretty worn out. And so we need some vehicles pretty badly. And this will address one of our very critical needs. And so we're moving on this as rapidly as we can. Secondly, and I would report this to the rest of the commission, the mayor and I met with representatives of Philon Ford here in Rattone some years ago. And we pointed out that local governments typically do procure vehicles and they usually go to a statewide price agreement to do that. Because if there's a statewide price agreement in place through Mexico General Services, the local government really just has to issue that purchase order for it, and it's a fairly easy process. And Philon Ford did follow up on that discussion, and they did obtain a statewide price agreement, and that includes the police vehicles. So we're happy that we can support a local business and we can buy these police vehicles here with a local business here in town. And they really are the only Ford dealership in this area of the state, so we hope that that really will help them. We feel fortunate to have that dealership here in town. A lot of small towns lost their dealerships, and we want to support that local business. There are a number of jobs that stem from that, certainly a lot of activity in our downtown area. And I'm happy that we can bring this proposal to you and try to support that. And then lastly, Mayor and Commissioner, we talked about the need to move fairly quickly on expanding these funds. That's a criticism that the legislature has of a lot of local governments. You see that in the news, that a lot of appropriations are just parked out there, the bonds are sold, the money is sitting there, why aren't you moving with the project? And with this statewide price agreement, we're able to move very quickly. Now, what the commission will be considering actually is three separate procurements, all under a straight price agreement. So in addition to the purchase of vehicles from Philon Ford, you will be considering buying required cameras that go in every police unit from WatchGuard. And then also, we have a outfitter here that adds, and Chief, why don't you come forward and you correct me on the things I'm going to say incorrectly here. They will outfit the police car with lights, with markings, with sirens, with radios, those kind of things. So you would be considering authorization for staff to procure all three services. And Chief, I don't know if you have anything to add to?
No, sir. Other than the WatchGuard cameras that are the in-car camera, those will be directly shipped directly to the outfitter, and they will install them there. So it will be a complete.
Questions for Mr. Barry?
I have one other thing to add, Mayor, in memo from Chief Garcia. You see that we would be expanding all of the capital outlay appropriation, the $226,000 and change. And then in addition, we have some funding, $16,000 and some change in a vehicle line item that we would bring to this procurement. And we would ask commission for approval of additional expense from General Fund Reserve. And I'll just say that it's a little bit under $70,000. So that also would be something that you would be considering under this item.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr., for the chief? How about Mr. Barry? And I believe Ms. Poe would like to address the commission on this. Nancy, if you could just give your name for the record, please.
Nancy Poe, who are educator, and appreciate the opportunity to speak to the commission. First, I'd like to brag on our city employees. The snow removal is always outstanding, the street and median maintenance, RPS decorating for the holidays in the city of Bethlehem, the fire department doing the Toys for Tots, the police department. I'm especially partial to Officer Martinez. She does a great job, and I like the female of the species. And the water department, I always feel for them when they're out in the cold repairing broken pipes. And once a month, I have the privilege to volunteer at the recycling center. And I get to see personally how hard our employees work on that first Saturday of the month. Second, I came here tonight. Second, I came here tonight to talk to you about electric vehicles. And I know you've already made your decision on this, but for the future, because you have many departments that use vehicles. This morning on the news, they're talking about delivery trucks, electric, that FedEx and Amazon are especially using. Then Bill and D announced your meeting tonight. I called Philon Ford and found out they have a Explorer Hybrid, which would save you half the cost of fuel. I have a hybrid, and I'm very impressed. It'll last forever, and it's so powerful engine. Ford also makes an all-electric F-150 pickup, and they have a new Mustang. I can just see our officers, how proud they'd be in a muscle car. The advantages, and they are overwhelming, of using electric vehicles, they're cheaper to operate than those that are powered by fossil fuels, they convert energy into motion more efficiently, and they have instant torque. That's that power that you want. Today's battery gives three times the miles per gallon equivalent. You can save on maintenance. Do you know how much it costs to maintain your vehicles? One department saved $6,000 per vehicle, per year, and purchasing six vehicles at this point would be $36,000 that you could save on that maintenance. There's no oil changes or filters, there's no spark plugs, wiring, ignition coil, no muffler, timing belt, catalytic converter, no fuel filters, fuel injector cleaning, or air filters, no engine storage, no emissions check, and less frequent brake replacements. Because of fewer moving parts, electric vehicles last a lot longer. You wouldn't have to replace as often. How often do you replace, say, police vehicles?
I would just say not often enough, but we're wearing them out, but that's a good point.
You wouldn't have, let's see, there's far less carbon emissions and other air pollutants, like 60% less of the carbon, that's 14,000 pounds of carbon emissions per vehicle per year, which is one of the reasons that people move to Raton, for our clean, fresh air. The human health benefits are outstanding, especially when police cars are often less idling. And electric vehicles are silent, so you could sneak up on the bad guys. And you've got free electricity? Question mark.
Question mark, yeah. Question mark.
And you can, you've got people in the city that could put in charging stations or charging facilities, and I'm so glad you're going to get the two charging stations down by the gravel tracks. And I understand one of the motels has a charging station. That's a great incentive for people to stay at that motel. Okay. Any other questions?
Now, Ms. Poe, we appreciate your thorough investigation into this, and it is something that we will probably be going forward in the future, going towards.
I think, yeah, it is the future, and we will go there.
There's, you know, you brought up the, oh, your charging stations. People forget, charging stations to properly do one and have one, it takes a chunk of change too, so that's something we have to be cognizant of going forward, that we have put enough money out there for that aspect of the project too, so.
One, one police department that I read about had a mix of electric and combustion engines, and when they had to take one of the combustion engines, there was a big letdown. You have to take this all day.
Before you step down, I just want to say, I want to commend you for your care and concern for this community. And if the rest of you don't know, I'm sure most of you do, but Mrs. Nancy Poe has, is her short list that she gave of her volunteer actions is very short compared to what she actually does. I'm not sure I can list out everything you do. I know you've helped kids access food for their, to get through the weekend from school. I know, you bring tears to my eyes for everything that you do and the care you take for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions for Mrs. Poe?
Nancy, I'm, I'm well aware of the need for the clean emissions type thing, but what I would ask at this time is I would ask the officer that is in the vehicle himself. He's the one that's going to be relying on that vehicle. How do they feel about it would be one of my major questions. So, you know, whenever that comes around, I'd like to, I'd like to talk to them, if they want, what they would like.
Do you know that, you know, New York City primarily uses electric vehicles?
There were several departments, Denver Police Department, Fremont, California, LA, Luxembourg.
Like I said, I'm, I'm well aware, and I think the future's coming, but I would like to know what the actual person that's going to be relying on that vehicle, what he feels or she feels at this time.
That's, that's why I said, one department was saying they'd rather have the electric truck.
Before you step down, Ms. Poe, I'd just make some comments to the commission and to you, and I mean, I would say that, you know, number one, we gave a reason that we really want to support this local business. Now, they, I know that Ford has a hybrid option, some vendors with the state contract do have that, two vendors actually. Philon Ford did not offer that as an option to us on the contract, and we could purchase from one of the other vendors, but I think it's really important, right, at this point to shop at home. But, you know, the mayor and I have met with Philon Ford about, you know, what we, about getting the contract, and they did do that. I think we have a good relationship, and we can work towards that. Obviously, as we pointed out, there's some infrastructure needs that we would have to work on, but, you know, I would say it's a, it's a great idea, it's something we need to work in the future, as commissioners have said, as you have said, Ms. Poe. I think by your coming here tonight, you know, you have kind of influenced how we'll look at this going forward. I would say you definitely made a difference. That's definitely going to be an option that we want to work in there. I mean, your points are valid, and nothing is that straightforward for the City of Raton. Everything takes a little while, but definitely, I think it's something that we want to, want to move to.
I just want to say, I was told at Philon that they were taking the Hybrid Explorer over to Trinidad Police Department.
Yeah, it's just, just the issue that...
Just to show them.
In the, in the state contract that's given to us, it's not an option currently. And, you know, we are, we're kind of in a pickle on these, and I hate to say we need to move fast. I never think that's a very good reason, but Chief, would you say we need to move on the vehicles pretty rapidly?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The fleet of 2010 Explorers, although they've given us a good life, and it's been a long 10 years of police work, and they're ready to go. Unfortunately, those will be our standbys, and we'll have to baby them along, but these six will come in very early.
I would just possibly make a suggestion, as our various departments are replacing vehicles here in the next year or so, we start working these in, see how, how they work out, and then move forward with larger...
Whatever.
Mayor, Commissioner, if I could just briefly, the, the agencies that are using them, they're improving, they're saying what they can and can't do in the field. There isn't a police package per se of a Hybrid vehicle for an all-electric vehicle. The vehicles that we are getting are police packages, they're built for the, they're built for this type of work, so they're more geared towards what we need. One thing I would like to do publicly is thank Jason Phillips for all of the hard work he did behind the scenes. Jason made my life very easy with this process, and I appreciate him, Mayor.
Cool. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we still have a proposal before us.
Yeah, we'll move to approve purchase of the police vehicles and equipment utilizing state price agreements with Philon Ford of Raton, Co., Service, OLC, and WatchGuard.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase order for the police vehicles. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, deliberate enact on GJS, J-JAC short-cycle applications for additional funding for Girl Circle and Restorative Justice Programs for fiscal year 21. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, this is another item which I'm going to turn to City Clerk, Michael Ann Antenucci, for details on. As I understand, the general broad overview of this item is, we have continued this Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee set up for a number of years, thanks to the efforts of Michael Ann and to Danielle. However, the funding seems to be, our historical funding source seems to be drying up, and so I think that as a group, Michael Ann and Danielle are exploring additional funding for the project to keep it going. I think it's a, it's turned out to be a very productive program for the community and necessary now, and so we would like to see that going. But I will let Michael Ann address that and just add, you know, we're looking forward to the commission to authorize the additional application for funding.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. Mayor, real quickly, did we ever dial in to the phone?
No, we did not.
Okay, on the next item, we'll have Jeff Peterson joining us for item G, so...
We're going to have Jason dial it in now?
I just text Jason that we were, I just texted Jeff as well.
We did text him. So, just hit nine, and then the number that's listed there on the sticker on the phone. Go give us just one moment. Hit the nine, or hit the, do you want to...
It's a phone, Jason.
Hit the phone button, and then the nine, sorry.
Hit the phone button, but it just, yeah, it never got the number. It's not my nine. It is not my nine.
Those phone systems are way too advanced.
Please enter your participant or moderator code, followed by the pound key. Please say your name, followed by the pound key.
Raton City Commissioner.
You are the first participant in the conference.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. I'll put it on mute.
Yeah. Turn the volume down.
Can you mute this off, please?
Just turn the volume down. Okay, so, item F, we did find out last month that, and this is through the CYFD program that we currently have funding for the Juvenile Justice, Girl Circle, Boys Council, and Restorative Justice, that there is some additional funds available this year. And, you know, we did get funding for the entire year, but our funding was scaled back slightly, and there were some programs statewide that didn't get funded at all. So in response to their offer to take additional applications, they're calling it a short-cycle award of Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee grant funds. Anybody that's currently participating this year and did receive funding is eligible to apply for these additional funds, and it would just be through June 30 of this fiscal year. So we would continue to administer the funds as the fiscal agent, and you'll see in your packet, we've got two requests, one for the Girl Circle program and the other for the Restorative Justice. At this time, the Boys Council does not need additional funds for this year. So we are requesting $66,000 for the Girl Circle, and there is a breakdown which would consist of $33,000 for the program, and then some additional funds for our coordinator, who is Danielle Vanderpool. That would be $6,600 for that. And then the city would also get the 5% admin fee if we received that total amount of funding. So our admin fee would be $2,480. And then for the Restorative Justice, we're requesting $30,195 for that program. So I think we have a good chance of getting funding, and we were in jeopardy of probably running out of funds around March. So this, we are awarded these funds, this would get us through June 30.
Cool. And Mayor, if I could just add, if the commission would consider these applications, if you would also consider giving the city manager authorization assigned.
Absolutely.
I will move to approve J-JAC short-cycle application for additional funding with the Girl Circle Restorative Justice Program for fiscal 21, including allowing the city manager to sign.
I'll second.
And a motion and a second to approve both applications that have been presented before us, J-JAC and the Girl Circle Restorative Justice Program fiscal year 21. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate enact on capital outlay request for historic building renovation. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, we do have Jeff Peterson on the phone from the center, and I would anticipate he'll make some comments in regard to this item. Commissioner Schuster and I have been talking about this, so I think Commissioner Schuster will comment this, on this as well. Do you have a memorandum in your packet from me discussing the item? And I'm getting ahead of the conversation a little bit, but I'll kind of jump to the end here. This is anticipating an additional request to the New Mexico Legislature in this 2021 session for $300,000 for renovation of a historic building, the Coors Building, for the purpose that Mayor Pro Tim and Jeff Peterson are going to bring forward to you. And you do have also a proposal from the center for community innovation in your packet in regard to the project, which is described as a toy lending library. And so there, Mayor Pro Tim and Mr. Peterson, if I could turn that over to you then to talk about the project. I'll stop there.
Okay. I'll just introduce it this way. Several years ago, the community did have a toy lending library through the county extension in New Mexico.
through the county extension and New Mexico State University. And that has lapsed. It's come to my attention that there are other toy lending libraries in the state that are daycare providers. Some of them are members of, but they have to travel. The closest one is in Nora, I believe. Or I could be wrong. It could be Eskenora. But it's in that neighborhood. And obviously, there's one in Albuquerque that's associated with UNM as well. So I talked with Jeff about this with the Center for Community Innovation. And he has done the research and looked into it. So I'll let him take it from there. But my thought was, we have buildings that could use some renovation. That could use some help. This project is a good project for our young children in the community.
Cool. Jeff, are you there?
Yeah, yes, I'm here, Mayor. Thanks for also letting me call in tonight and talk.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, what I like about this program is, and we have a little bit of a track record in Rattom, to know that it can work. There are some lending libraries across the country that have been operating for 20 or more years. And certainly, the need of the community to help critical age groups, especially that 005, those kind of things, is vital. And helps the daycare providers, who they tend to have on its trust, operate, and it could be just a bit valuable for the setup. And what I also like about it is it is really easy to operate. These are very simple operations to run. COVID notwithstanding and all of that business, but beyond that, that is a fairly simple staffing operation. And then finally, the last question, I think we have some groups in the community that, you know, the center has worked to build very steadily. And that's an organization that will, is gonna get going again after some of the COVID gets behind us. And, you know, Emma Green, who helps the kids help the community, is a valuable resource. We have Rida, we have Dia Youth on the horizon. We have a lot of projects that I think we'll be able to discuss and help to do the stuff on.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Schuster or Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Commission, if I could just kind of bring this full circle. You know, what I had anticipated in my discussions with Mayor Pro-Tim is that we may look at the Coors Building for housing the facility. And the Coors Building is a building on South First Street, owned by the city of Rattom. We have not had an occupant of that building for a number of years now. The last occupant, the last full-time occupant was the City Museum, which is not a division of the city. It's a not-for-profit organization. Before they moved up to Second Street some years ago, we've had a little periodic use of it here and there, but there hasn't been a full-time occupant. The building is not in bad shape, but we're looking at HVAC improvements, probably some electrical improvements. There, it's a typical kind of work-to-live space with some space upstairs that someone some years ago had started renovations on, but they didn't get very far. So a lot of that would be worked in the mechanical room, the basement. It's got a near-full basement. Some renovations on that main room, and then a lot of the renovations are upstairs. But I think the amount, $300,000, will go a long way on the Coors Building. We do have some other buildings we can look at. I made the judgment that that might be the best bid for our request and the easiest to get up and running. However, we do have other facilities that we can talk about as well. But that's just my proposal that I've put out for you. Y'all can also talk about that, this facility you would like to utilize for this.
Any comments, questions?
No. I'm sorry, Commissioner. The last comment would be, we are considering a capital outlay request to the legislature. And so my request would be really focused on the capital improvement part of that.
That's just my comments on the actual capital outlay request itself. I absolutely support downtown renovation. You know, we talked about item number eight on the ICIP is city building improvements and renovations. Even though it was categorized as convention facilities, I think we can all agree it could still be, you know, something downtown. My only concern, you know, and I also, you know, a toy lending library, I don't see any problem with that at all. I think that could be a good thing. Is this strategically, from a capital outlay perspective, with already five requests of our top five items? You know, adding a sixth thing, it could divide our money more. How important is a building renovation at a time when we already have a pre-engineered building undergoing, an airport hangar, improvements at the convention center, the aquatic center, the transfer station, the depot, the J.C. Penney Building, and the other building over there? You know, we just have a lot of building projects going on. So that's my biggest concern is not... I mean, and I know that it becomes a point where, how do you get the money to renovate and this and that? And capital outlay is one of those areas. So my concern would be strategy for this particular session. You know, is it possible to wait to a different session to put that on the list? Does other things come off the list? That's my only comment.
It's gonna be an interesting session this year anyway, since it is. They're doing everything online, all of their requests. Meeting with our representatives face-to-face may or may not happen, depending on how they feel about things. So, yeah, I think it's a worthwhile project. I would like to see it go forward. But I think capital outlay this year is just gonna be tough, period, whatever were the questions. That's all I have to say.
I agree with Commissioner Charlie about the thing. But the thing that I would say is that we go for the money now and hope that we can get it even with the other buildings that are looming and all the other projects that we have, if they can at least get this to the city of Rattom for $300,000. And we can see what happens from there.
As they say, it never hurts to ask, right?
Yeah.
That was... That's my feeling, not it. Is it... There was a comment made by one of our esteemed senators a couple of years ago that, well, we didn't ask for enough, so...
Gee, who is that?
So I just felt like, you know, I don't think it hurt to ask. I think it actually benefits us to ask for what we can ask.
Sure.
And especially with, you know, everything we're asking for, we have targeted projects. And so to have targeted projects usually...
Makes a difference.
It does make a difference.
Mayor Pro-Tim, I'd like to turn to you on your work for this. Jeff, are you stepping up and volunteering basically to take this over? So hopefully, we can get this off the ground. Any other discussion? I have a motion. So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the capital outlay request for historic building renovation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Good job. Item H, deliberate enact on Resolution 2021-02, approval of November 2020 financial report.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is our financial report for November. We're bringing it to you this evening since we didn't have a regular second meeting in December. And then on our next meeting, we'll have the report for the second quarter. So looking at the November report, you'll see that as of November 30, our available cash in the general fund was just slightly below $2 million. And this is just due to kind of what we've talked about in the past is our cash flow throughout the first six months of the year starts to decline slightly. And then in late December, early January, we start to receive the first half of the property taxes. And I've received one distribution the last week of December, and I'm expecting another one here for the month of January. So I've also given you the cash balances and the various other funds that we manage. And then as far as gross receipts, the distribution that we received in the month of December reflects the October business activity. So based on our general fund budget projections, and this is mainly due to ongoing construction, we were 1.83% above that projection. So we're still holding our own, despite we know the ongoing COVID restrictions and a lot of businesses are either closed or... I know some of the restaurants have closed temporarily for the winter. And then others have restrictions on the number of customers they can have at any given time. So other than that, I'd say in October, our construction activity was still pretty good. And we have a few projects that are still ongoing through the winter. So let's see. Oh, the other thing, partly the decline that we see in our general fund cash balance, you'll see that I've noted there under my comments. We did do a temporary transfer to cover the CARES Act small business continuity grants that we did award back in November. And we received all of those funds from DFA, have been reimbursed. And so prior to the end of December, I have reimbursed the general fund for that temporary transfer. So the next report that I give you at the next meeting will show an improved cash balance because of that. Other than that, if we look at the report itself, I did just want to comment, we had a couple funds in the capital project fund, one being our historic buildings. There was a negative cash balance of $7,406.40. That was for the oven at the senior center. And we have a grant for that. I did receive those funds in the month of December. So that grant will be closed out. And then also, we had some work with the company Parametrics on the depot project for some environmental work. And we've submitted those reimbursement requests, and those monies were received in the month of December as well. So with one exception, the Federal Highways Administration did accidentally send one of the reimbursements to the DOT, which I'm not sure how that happened. So we did have to do a temporary transfer to cover those checks to Parametrics until we received the money from the DOT. So you'll see that on the December report. But other than that, they did process the reimbursement request. Is there any questions about our activities in the month of November?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2021-02. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, deliberate enact on Resolution 2021-03, budget adjustment number five for fiscal year 21.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet, you will see we should have provided each of you with a revised adjustment. So the one that was at your chair when you arrived is the one that we'll be reviewing. We made a couple last-minute changes that pertain to the purchase of the police vehicles, so we'll review that. But you will see that we have some insurance recovery money related to a claim on an ambulance. And so we're proceeding. We've gotten approval from the self-insurers to proceed with those repairs. That ambulance has been out of service, so we want to get that repaired as quickly as possible and put it back into the fleet. And in anticipation of the approval of the purchase of the police vehicles, we did include in the budget adjustment for approval this evening a temporary transfer from the general fund. And we generally do these temporary transfers pending receipt of the grant reimbursement. So I am proposing that we may potentially have to do a temporary transfer just so that we can pay the vendor and send those funds to the vendor quickly. Because there's part of that process, we're gonna have to insure the vehicles, submit to the state for license plates, and do all of that stuff. And that takes time. So as quickly as we can, we want to pay the vendor, and then we'll submit the reimbursements to DFA, and hopefully, we can turn that money around really quickly. But it is a process. And then as I was discussing on the depot project, we do have to do a temporary transfer to cover those funds in anticipation of the reimbursement from that agency as well. Most of the others are just kind of line item adjustments. I had reviewed the second quarter reports. I'm kind of doing a lot of these adjustments in anticipation of submitting that quarterly report to DFA. Let's see. On the fire fund, I wanted to mention, we did pay off the loan that we have with the New Mexico Finance Authority, and that was for fire equipment. And so we did have some excess debt service, probably excess interest funds that were remitted back to the city. And so that's the $1,107 that you see there. So those funds will actually be going back into the fire protection fund because that is the fund that's been paying the loan these past several years. So I'm making an adjustment, put those funds back into the fire protection. You will see under the police grants, we are adding in the capital outlay that we're receiving for the 226-525, in addition to those temporary transfers from the general fund. Also, we've received federal CARES Act money for the airport. And so that's to reimburse us for utilities. And I've submitted the first request to the feds for that. And it's slightly under $12,000. So we're gonna try to spend that $30,000 before the end of this fiscal year. But I did want to bring that to your attention, that we did receive those monies, and we've already gotten the first reimbursement back. And then, of course, we also had a second legislative capital outlay agreement that you executed in December. And we've received that executed agreement back for the economic development, pre-engineered still building. That project will take a little bit longer to implement, but we'd like to get it in the budget. And we will have to revisit that when the time comes. On the second page, you'll see the fire equipment loan, those monies for the excess debt service. And then also, some adjustments just to account for the additional revenues, donations that we received this year for the fireworks show, and then also the charity donations that we received this year for the Toys for Tots. So I just want to thank the community for their generosity for both of those community events. Everybody's very generous, especially when it comes to Toys for Tots. That's all I had to share. Any other questions? I've already made approval of budget adjustment number five.
Any questions for Michael Ann? As usual, a top count.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-03, budget adjustment number five, fiscal year 21.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2021-03, budget adjustment number five for fiscal year 21. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate enact on Resolution 2021-04, designated official custodians of the inquiry.
Mr. Mayor? Mayor Commission, in the resolution, and this again is another annual resolution, we do talk about the designated personnel in different facilities and different facilities. we do talk about the designated personnel in different facilities and different departments that would be responsible for a records request, a public documents request, which we would typically get in really all of these departments. So I'll go through those real quick. Clerk's office and all, there's not listed, designated Michael Ann and Lucy Shears are currently our custodian for public records. Dispatch would be April Lopez. Fire and emergency services, that would be Chief Burke. Library would be the librarian, Thela Wright. Municipal court is the clerk, Christine Viancino. Police department, Adel Garcia. Rattone Public Service Company, the business manager, Robin Osborne. And Rattone Waterworks, the business manager, there's Janu Triglio. So that again would be an annual resolution that you typically see at the first meeting for you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor?
I approve the designating official custodians of record, Resolution 2021-03.
On second, I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-04, designated official custodians of record. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Item K, city manager report. Mr. Burry.
Thank you, Mayor. As you had mentioned earlier, the opening day of the New Mexico Legislature 2021 60-day session is January 19th at noon. The session will run through March 20th. Following that time, the governor has until April 9th act on legislation. I think, Mayor, as you have mentioned, it's going to be an interesting session, being a 60-day session, there will be a lot of legislation introduced. The municipal league, those of you who have been active with municipal league reports, has provided some reports on some of the proposed legislation, some of the prefiled legislation, or some of their contact with legislatures as far as what legislation is coming, and there are several proposed pieces of legislation which are going to have an impact on the local agency, on the municipality. And we'll definitely talk about that as we go through the session. Things are different this year in that we will not have those face-to-face contacts. Now, typically, a citizen or someone here at the city can monitor a lot of what's going on at the legislature on their website. They have real-time webcasts of committee hearings in both the House and the Senate, and the House and the Senate when they're on the floor. I know I utilize that when I'm in the office here to try to follow what's going on, and it's a valuable tool. So that's available to anyone who wants to follow along. I would mention that a website has also been set up currently, and it's called the Virtual Roundhouse of New Mexico. There will be an opportunity for virtual meetings with lawmakers, and a person would simply have to register at a website, virtualroundhousenm.com. And I have already done that, and I've gone through that registration. There are a number of private concerns that have set this up, and it will be a way for the public, and specifically those of us who won't have a chance to travel down there to monitor what is being discussed, what is being proposed at the legislature. And I think that this year, it is very important that all of us really follow closely with the proposed legislation. And so that will start soon, January 19th. In regard to the capital outlay request that you all had considered here tonight, I have submitted the previous request that we talked about. I will work on submitting that request tomorrow. And then typically, I would also try to communicate details to our representatives in the House and the Senate. Anyone can do that. They can contact their senator or their representative by mail, by email, by text, by a number of methods, or try to call them. I'm going to try to send that to their home address before the 19th, before things get rolling, and then try to communicate with them what's important in the city of Rattone. But I would say that in regard to any of the capital outlay oriented proposed legislation, they do welcome that input. The present online system of requesting capital outlay is very short on details, very limited on details. Typically, we would have that face-to-face meeting, we would tell them what's going on in Rattone, we would invite them here for a town hall meeting to discuss that with the public. None of those things we can really do this year. So we will take every effort that we can to communicate our concerns, our needs, and our observations of the session. I've advised most of the city commissioners that I have been in contact with New Mexico Public Health Department in regard to the use of the convention center for really any purpose that they need during the pandemic, but specifically for vaccinations. However, we don't have a lot of detail on that. They had a scheduled meeting today to meet us at the convention center, and then they advised us that they would have to reschedule that. They had a conflict and couldn't make that. So I do not have much detail for you specifically. I think people want to know, when can we start getting a vaccination? And that simply has not been communicated to us, other than the guidance that the governor had put out earlier. And that is on her website, it's on a number of websites, but we do not have any detail. I know, Mayor, there's been some discussion of having vaccinations administered at the senior center, also anticipate that at the convention center, however, we just don't have a lot of detail on that. I certainly will advise the public and the commission as soon as we get some more detail on that. So we're waiting and requesting that information, but we don't have a lot to go on here right now, other than that guidance from the governor that's out there now. Just an update on a couple of projects, update on the Great Blocks project. I would say we are close to or at substantial completion. Construction that remains includes some street lighting, placement of plant material, completion of irrigation systems, they will have to prove those up in warmer weather, and then we have a punch list and cleanup, of course, on that project. One thing I would like to point out on the Great Blocks project, we have designated the block of Rio Grande Avenue between First Street and Second Street as one-way, eastbound traffic only. I know that this is confusing in Rattone because it's been two-way forever. I drove up the wrong way over the weekend myself, I know how that works. We have tried to put very prominent signage on that street, but we would try to get the word out to people that that is eastbound traffic only. All other streets are two-way. And if you go to Cook Avenue, we have a synchronized intersection, it makes that much safer and much easier to use. So I wanted to point that out. I would report to the commission that the Shooter Theater Hospitality Room project has been completed. We have conducted the final inspection, we are working with final payment to the contractor now. I'm really happy with that project, I would look for a chance to inspect that with the commissioners here. However, Shooter Restoration Committee is doing some additional work at the Shooter. So in the hospitality room, they have a little bit of tile work that they are working on that contains some special artwork, so that is still coming. Shooter Restoration will be here at one of our subsequent meetings, and they will provide a report to the commission. However, I can tell you that they have been in the process of funding and constructing some stage lighting improvements at the Shooter. I understand that that stage lighting system is installed here currently, and will modernize that stage lighting portion of that. So I've not seen that myself, however, we'll make a trip down there and look at that too. And then Billy Donati will attend one of our meetings at a later time, and he'll give us full detail on that. I did want to make the commission aware of that. As we've talked about before, we are currently undertaking the environmental assessment phase on our CDVG project, that's the downtown street rehabilitation project, and on the railroad depot project, as Michael Ann had talked about. So those are underway. We are trying to wrap up environmental assessment for a summertime construction of both of those projects, and those moving along pretty well. Last thing I have, Mayor, we have been in conversation with an engineering firm, Bohannon Houston. They have begun design on the Interstate 25, US 6487 interchange project. They've advised us that they're underway on that process. I'm exchanging some information on them and advising them as to what's important with the city of Rattone there, so those communications are taking place. Typically, this type of design process would take some time, and there would be a public input element. We'll advise the commission and the public as far as that public input, and that will be at a time when the engineer has a preliminary design or options on certain things. They understand that access to business during construction is critical. How we handle traffic there is important to all of us, and so they will present us their findings and their recommendations, and we'll have a chance to have some input on that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Burry. I'd just like to reiterate and state that this legislative session is going to be very crucial, especially in the manner that's going to be presented. And as New Mexico Municipal League President, every commissioner in the state, every councillor or whatever, needs to have a presence of some form, like phone calls, letters, emails, whatever, especially when some of this legislation comes up, civil rights, liberties is a big one. So we will try and keep you all informed on that. AJ will be putting out a weekly report on what's exactly happening, and he will give us all contact information. Just got to make sure y'all are aware of that. All right, that brings us to item L, closed session pursuant to 10-15-1H5, collective bargaining in the city of Rattone and Rattone firefighters local 2378. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to that.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. One second. We are there, thank you.
Mayor, we need a roll call vote.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackman?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Where's the ballot?
Yes. It's been a night. Now I can do that.